Welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the planning commission for this Tuesday, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. We will go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Jason Anderson, and if everybody else could mute themselves, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jason, can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner Caranta.
Present.
Commissioner Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Hughes.
Present.
Commissioner Schmidt. Dennis, you're muted.
Oh, there you are.
Okay, gotcha. And then Vice Chairperson Keane is not here yet. Chairperson Van den Eyck.
Here.
So we have six present and one absent.
Great. Can I get a motion for the approval of the agenda, please?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
Second, bring it up.
I can second that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Caranta.
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes.
Yes.
And Chairperson Van den Eyck.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Great. We'll go ahead and move into the public comment portion of the meeting, which is reserved for persons who would like to address the commission on any item that is not on the agenda, over which we might have jurisdiction. If you could please limit your time to three minutes, please state your name for the record before making a presentation. Is there anybody in the of the attendees that would like to make a comment during public comment on an item not on this agenda? If so, you can raise your hand on Zoom. I don't see any raised hands, so we'll go ahead and close the public comment. Can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion approved consent count.
Somebody second that?
I'll second.
Okay. Matt, can I root for a call, please?
Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner Caranta.
Yes.
Commissioner Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Chairperson Van den Eyck.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead and move into our public hearing. For each of the following items in the public hearing, public will be given the opportunity to speak. After a staff report, the chair will open the public hearing and invite the applicant or his applicant's representative to make any comments. Members of the public will be invited to provide testimony to the commission following the applicant. Speaker should state their name for the record and can address the commission for up to three minutes. After all the public comments have been received, the public hearing will be closed and the commission will discuss the item and take appropriate actions. So we're going to go ahead and do our expertise on item number two, the administrative use permit for seventy-seven oh five, seventy-seven oh six, seven, San Gabriel Road. And we'll go down the list here. Jason, any expertise on this?
No, no expertise.
Randy?
No expertise.
Victoria.
Yes, I did call the Collins family this evening before the meeting, and I just wanted to confirm that they'd be on the meeting tonight to speak. They said that they were not present at the AUP because of Chris Collins's mother passing, so they've been dealing with a lot of that right now. And I just had asked her a little bit about the neighborhood, and we've received a couple of public comments via email in opposition to it, and so I had asked her if there was any in in pro for the 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 building that they want to build. And she hadn't said anything of that, but she will be on the call tonight, so.
Thank you. Greg.
No expertise.
And Dennis?
No expertise.
And I have none as well. So we'll go ahead and turn the time over to Kelly. Are you giving the staff report today? Somebody is. Kelly, you're muted.
Kelly will be presenting tonight. Yeah, she's she'll get off mute here in a second and we'll get going and uh-oh.
All my buttons disappeared when I started sharing, so I'm gonna unmute myself and now I'll share the screen, I guess.
Yeah, sorry. That happens sometimes.
Let me see where I can get us. Let's try this. Can you guys see the presentation?
Yes.
Perfect. So tonight, we're looking at an oversized accessory structure on San Gabriel Road. It's use permit twenty-one zero one one three. So the location is a property that's on the corner of San Gabriel Road and Carmelita Avenue. It's in the residential suburban zoning district, which has a minimum lot size of two and a half acres. It's about two point three one acres net and about two and a half acres growth when you add in the street frontage. There's two units existing on the property, the primary residence to the rear of the site and a new second unit that was built up towards San Gabriel Road. So the proposal tonight is for a twenty-four hundred square foot workshop. The primary residence on the site is twenty-one ninety-one square feet. So this proposed structure does exceed the hundred percent of the principal structure limitation that's in our code for allowances of larger structures above fifty percent. So the project does require a use permit based on the size, the appearance and the design. A little bit of background on our code, there's a couple criteria listed on our code that are required in order to meet findings for approval of an administrative use permit. The project does fail to meet a couple of those findings, which is why it's before the planning commission tonight. The project is located, the building is located between the primary structure and the public roadway, as that's the most suitable location for the structure. The floor area of the structure, as I mentioned, exceeds the floor area of the primary structure. And then this other finding that's listed in there relates to blocking sunlight for adjacent properties, altering the site distance for roads. And the important part of this one is substantially altering the visual quality of the property. And so I know that there were some neighborhood concerns at the AUP hearing about that specific finding. So the AUP hearing officer did preside over a public hearing. And based on the inconsistency with these findings, it was referred to the planning commission. As a reminder, the planning commission does have the authority to approve the structure under our standard use permit findings, so we do not need to make the findings listed for the administrative use permit. And you have authority to make exceptions to that code section, which is why we're here tonight. So this is the site plan that was provided by the applicant. You can see the newer second unit built down here on the lower portion of the property, and then there's quite a bit of slope to get up to the main residence, surrounded by some mature trees. So this portion of the property is relatively flat and relatively open and free from existing tree cover. These are the proposed elevations of the structure. They are including hardy board siding and a composition shingle roof. They also originally turned this in without any windows and minimal doors. So staff did ask, in order to increase neighborhood compatibility, that they add some properly sized windows, and they have done so around all elevations of the structure, included windows and decorative doors in order to try and increase neighborhood compatibility and appear more barn-like in nature. Again, these are the side elevations that show some architectural detailing as well. We did add a condition to the project about a darker color for the building to kind of be more rural in nature with sort of the old red barn style, so a darker earth toned red or brown, something of that nature, so that it doesn't stand out as a brighter light color. This is the floor plan of the structure, so it is designed as a workshop with a large open space and two roll-up doors. There is a small restroom area with just a toilet and a sink that is allowed by code. The building will be deed restricted to allow for that plumbing to exist in the structure and make sure that nobody thinks it can be converted into another residence in the future. The deed restriction called out by the conditions will also include language that clearly states that this is accessory to residential use and not for commercial purposes. These are a couple pictures of the property. This is sort of the corner of Carmelita and San Gabriel, and so we can see the existing second unit there, and so the structure would be placed between the road and the second unit. Again, here was another view just farther up Carmelita. And then this is the view from San Gabriel, so this would be off to the side of the existing second unit in this location. So we do have a number of conditions to increase the project's compatibility with the neighborhood area. Consistency with the architectural elevations, again, ensuring that a darker color is used on the building. That deed restriction that would limit the use of the structure. And we also have a condition that would require that they plant five smaller native trees along the San Gabriel frontage to help provide some layering and visual buffer to the structure that goes in. We do recognize that there are some power lines above the San Gabriel frontage. And so we have conditions that those be a smaller native tree that was at their maximum height, not interfere with those power lines. Public Works has also conditioned the project that they use sub-meters for the building so that there's no additional independent metering that could make the building easily converted into another secondary unit. So the project does qualify for a class-three categorical exemption through CEQA, because it's a construction of a small structure. And then these are the findings associated with use permit approval by the planning commission. So consistency with the general plan, consistency with the zoning ordinance. You know, not being detrimental to the health, safety, welfare of the general public, not proposing traffic volumes beyond what the streets can accommodate. And then that fourth bulleted finding is the one of most import when looking at projects like this, that the proposed project will not be inconsistent with the character of the neighborhood. So staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt the resolution approving the use permit tonight with the conditions as added. As always, the commission has three alternatives. You can make modifications, modification to the project conditions. You can determine that more information is needed and refer the item back to staff and the applicant. Or you can deny the permit. In order to deny the project, you would only have to make one contrary finding that was listed in the previous slide. So that concludes staff's presentation. We're available for any questions.
Thank you, Kelly. Do we have any questions from any of the commissioners for staff? Dennis?
Yes, please. I have several questions, please. And this is a issue that I have a lot when we're dealing with conditional use permits. And it has to do with what occurs when the conditional use permit is violated. And for instance, this particular project, we've identified a number of trees that are to be planted and to be used for screening of the of the building. So what would happen if trees aren't kept up and they die? I mean, and they aren't replaced. At that point in my mind, because there can identify it as somewhat as a visual mitigation to screen the building from the roads. If they aren't planted or if they're not maintained, then what can happen with the conditional use permit? Is it something that they, I mean, the building can't be torn down, but how does it dealt with?
Well, there's two different steps. One of them is when we issue the construction permit, obviously, we make sure that all of those things are on the plans of the construction permit. Second step is when we go out to do a final inspection on the project, that all those things are in place. The third step is we do have these conditions that last forever, if they're written properly, that are required for these items to be maintained. If they're taken out, they die, or something happens, that is an enforcement item, the city can go and follow up with that and ask that they comply with their conditions. And their conditions are essentially a contract between the applicant and the city, and we expect that to occur. And if it doesn't occur, again, it becomes an enforcement issue. And we typically rely on folks letting us know what happens. Sometimes because we have hundreds of use permits throughout the city, we're not able to monitor them all the time. But generally, I think what happens is people let us know when these things happen and we get alerted by our by our neighborhood groups, so it's actually pretty nice how that works out. But most of the time, we find that people comply because they want the project to continue looking good and they continue to maintain those things. But great question.
And I did just want to point out that our condition for landscaping does include language that it be irrigated and maintained in a manner that allows the trees to thrive and grow to their natural form. So there is a long-term implication with the condition as written.
Yeah, I'm looking five, ten years down the road, you know, things happen, and there's a lot of use permits issued in the city. Mostly commercial that I know of, in which there's trees that are supposed to be maintained and kept, and they're gone. And they haven't been replaced, and nothing has happened. And so there are a number of neighbors who have have expressed concerns. So I guess I want them to understand that if the project gets approved and the conditions aren't met and continued with, then there's something that they could say. There's two roll-up doors on the on the building. But there's nothing that shows vehicular access to the building from the streets. Is there going to be a plan to put a driveway from San Gabriel to the front or on the side from Carmelita? How is this going to be accessed? The driveway that goes to the to the back to the primary houses on the on the west side. And I'm sure that's the same structure that's the, I imagine that the ADU is using. So how are we going to access this building if people want to have? If they're going to make deliveries, or I mean, I mean, they want to drop something off inside the building, how are they going to get there?
So I think the applicant can best answer that. You know, we do see some structures designed like this that have your mowers and your tractors and things that don't need a a more formal driveway approach. But I believe that the applicant is in attendance tonight and can answer that question for you more succinctly.
Okay, I would say that, I mean, turning, I'm, one of the things I was looking at is the the conditions and the public works conditions. There's no mention of a an encroachment permit if they are going to put a driveway off of San Gabriel or Carmelita or both. And so to me, there would have to be an encroachment permit, a condition that they would install the city standard asphalt apron and those type of things.
Yeah, we generally don't add conditions for things that are code required to do anyways. We are, we're welcome to do that so that they have notification if the applicant indeed says that that's their plan, but it does not need to be conditioned for them to, for that process to be required as that's a city and code required process.
Spent on their fence on that entire property and the new road out there and the drainage, the way everything works, I seriously doubt they plan on doing anything at Carmelita and San Gabriel for access, but
Might not be them, I might, they might sell it. It might be someone else.
Yeah.
You never can look into the future and see what may or may not happen. Has there been any explanation as to why the building has to be the size? Is there a specific reason? Is it a prefabbed structure that comes in this form and can't be made smaller? Is there any justification for why they're asking for the bigger size?
I think that's another good question for the applicants. I know that it's designed sort of as a workshop space. But I think in terms of the specific use of how they're, how they're going to use the structure, that would be good to clarify with the applicant.
So one of the letters that was referred to by Victoria talked about the industrialization of the area because the building even suggested that there could be business run out of the building. Is there any, although I I see the the conditions that we have in place, is there a cottage business or something that could be operated out of this business, out of this building as a business legally? At some point.
Yeah, so our code does allow home occupations as businesses. Those are generally small-scale office-type uses. We do allow like a homemade artwork and things like that to be done as a home occupation and accessory structures are able to be used for that. Those are generally very small-scale operations. They can't emit, you know, noise beyond what a standard residential noise would be or odors or anything like that. We do not allow mechanics in residential areas and sort of, you know, larger scale welding operations and things like that, so you know, the applicants have confirmed with us that they do not intend to use this for any sort of commercial purpose at all, but you know, again, properties sell and things happen. But any any activity that takes place in the accessory structure would need to comply with our home occupation regulations and would be smaller scale in nature.
Are there fire sprinklers in this being going to be required in the structure?
I believe so. I think that the limit for fire sprinklers is a thousand square feet, so this would
Okay, and lastly, I mean, I, when I read the letters from the neighbors, there was characterizations in there that monstrosity, industrial, things like that. I was actually happy to see the the architecture of the building being as as it is. And then the height of the building isn't really abnormal. It seems rather normal for residential in terms of height of a building. The the size of the footprint, to me, doesn't seem to be that unusual in in context of with, say, someone had a house, I mean, twenty-four hundred square feet. There's houses that are bigger than that, so in the in this area, are there homes and other structures that are similar in size and and height?
Sure, we have houses that vary all different sizes. There are some houses nearby that are as small as twelve hundred square feet. There's others that are four thousand square feet that are on the same block, so this particular block has a big variety of all different custom homes. There's no tracks in here, mostly large lot. You know, homes. I will add to your other comment about the scale and size and design. We we did actually work with the applicants quite a bit upfront before this even came to its first hearing on really redesigning. They came in with a design that was oriented differently. It was much less adorned and much closer to the corner and much more intrusive to the neighborhood, and they worked with us to to really scale it back and reduce the scope of it and redesign it with much better articulation. And that's the design that you're seeing now. So they've come quite a long ways, but yeah, and we're here because of the neighborhood concerns. That's why it was pushed from the administrative hearing up to this point.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other questions of staff? Jason?
Well, you know, as far as the staff's concerned, the only concern they had was that it didn't fit within the the areas kind of nature. And I don't see really any blockage besides from the road to the property. Are there any properties around that would create a visual obstruction for maybe through sites and and that type of issue? Is anybody particularly concerned with their property being blighted by it?
I do think there are a couple neighbors here in attendance, and they can probably speak best to you know, the impacts as as people that live live around this site. And I just did want to clarify, I don't know that, you know, staff has raised a major concern about neighborhood compatibility. That just is the finding that we need to make for these large structures. And sometimes they're sighted in non-visible locations, and sometimes they're more visible, and and sometimes you know, neighborhoods have larger lots that are more rural and it blends in, and sometimes there's different situations, so that's where we come into sort of our complication, and that's why you're all here tonight, fortunately.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Now, let me try to infer that you you're not approving. You always, you always try, the staff always tries to approve everything if at all possible, right? I like that. Thank you.
Victoria.
And I believe Randy's hand's been up, so if he wants to go first, then I'll go. Go for it.
Okay, pretty much, I think Dennis and Jason pretty well nailed it. I just wanted to make sure my interpretation is correct. So is staff's recommendation to pass this? Or they, do they have a recommendation one way or the other? That'd be for Phil mainly.
Okay, well, you were asking me specifically. The recommendation is to approve with the conditions?
Okay. Yeah, because I'm kind of where Jason's at, where I'm looking at, aside from the other, the other party's interjection here as far as where there's other, any other concern, so I just want to make sure I interpreted it clearly.
Victoria, did you have questions?
Yeah, and I guess it's because I, while I empathize with the neighbor comments that we received, and I also am inclined to very much want to accept this building, even if it's in a smaller floor capacity. I really like the design that we're seeing and the improvements that staff suggested and the applicant complied with. I am curious, though, as far as the square footage, does the new SB nine at all impact the implications of what they could do with this building if it were at that twenty-four hundred? You know, it, again, I don't think that this particular homeowner is looking to make it a dwelling, but could that impact for future buyers?
SB nine is going to have some limitations on it based on the size and the location of the house. We're still working on that ordinance now, as it, as our draft ordinance is right now, or interim ordinance, it would limit that unit to eight hundred square feet if they subdivided the property with SB nine, but if the structure is already there, you know, it kind of creates some interesting situations. I mean, this this property is served by City Sewer, is potentially eligible for an SB nine lot split. It already has an accessory dwelling unit on it. It's a whole number of different ways you can go, but
Yeah, I mean, I empathize with the neighbors, but I'm just curious about potential efficiency for more homes in the future, so I guess that's my question.
Yeah, we definitely never know, you know, what the state is going to say in terms of that. We're certainly limiting SB nine units to be smaller affordable by design because that's the intent of the state law. But we also know there's a lot of focus on SB nine and potential statewide revisions to some of that language in one direction or the other. So we can never tell the future for sure. I don't believe that this property has access to sewer, so that does limit some of their SB nine potential. Just for knowledge.
No, I think it, I think it does have sewer.
That that was my question is, is it on sewer?
I just got confirmation from. Yep.
It is on sewer?
Yes.
Okay, because I, where I was seeing the proposed workshop, I was like, that's probably where the leach field is if they are on septic, so.
And I think yeah. Yeah, strange how sewer goes this far west, you know, it's surprising to me always, but there is a, there is an extension that goes up San Gabriel Road, and that's the furthest west it goes. It doesn't go very far up San Gabriel, but it does a little bit.
It's amazing how it goes down there and it can't come down San Jacinto.
I know, isn't that incredible? Yeah, I know. Or to the Sycamore neighborhood, you know? Yeah, there's some places that got missed. Anyway, we better go to the public before we start getting too many more discussions or opinions, unless you've got more questions for staff, but
No, Victoria asked my question, so I'm good.
Okay, so did I get everybody? Great. We'll go ahead and then open up to the public hearing. We'll invite the applicant if they're on the line to address us if they'd like to.
I believe that you can speak now, applicant.
Hi, my name is Trey.
Hi, my name is Troy Schneiderwind. Could you guys turn the volume down? I'll be speaking for the Collinses tonight. Wanted to address a couple of issues that came up just in the brief synopsis that you guys just spoke about. Access at this time is not going to be off of Carmelita or San Gabriel. It'll be self-contained to the site itself. Again, I can't address if the Collins sell this property five years from now, but I'm pretty sure there's rules, regulations and codes in place to address that down the road if somebody tried to do that. As far as businesses, no, this is just a personal workshop for Elizabeth and Chris Collins. Chris was going to be doing his bike repairs and a little bit of light automotive work. Elizabeth does a little bit of hobbies and crafts. It's their proposed workshop for their personal use only. And if it does get sold down the line, I would say that, again, those rules and regulations that you guys have in place would be well taken care of for addressing those. As far as the building design, the Collinses have put a lot of effort into working with the city to make this as appealing to the neighborhood as possible. The size is what they want. It's for their personal use only. And I would ask today that that gets approved just based on those basic requests and all time and effort that they've put into this. And as far as the utilities are concerned, the conditions are already met or listed that we will have to not have any more metering or another sewer connection. And it is on City Sewer at this time. So I don't think that's an, an issue that we need to worry about. And I do believe that both the Collinses and myself think that it does blend in with the neighborhood. The, you know, beauty is in the eye of the beholder and they think it looks fantastic. So I'm going to ask them if they want to speak now. Chris, Elizabeth, would either of you like to speak?
Yes, hello, thank you for the, for the meeting and, and, and coming to this point, we've been owning this property almost seven years now and it's been our dream to retire here. And now that we are fully retired, this is, this shop has been a dream of mine. I, I restored old bicycles back when I was a teacher for thirty five years. I've given them to kids and some of the senior folks in, in the town. And when I was on the school board for eight years, I did the same thing in Avanale, but now that we thank God we finally live here, I'm very excited about that. And that, that's just an interest I have. I have old fifty, sixty year old bicycles, you know, that's it. And I do, I'm into old classic cars, obviously, but I'm not about to do anything other than my own personal stuff. And just, just, it requires, requires that much space because these vehicles and things, we don't like them outside and, and it makes the neighborhood look better if they're all inside. And so the shop will be a place just for that stuff, including a tractor and and so, you know, this is, the intent is just for a family personal use and that's it. And the upper house is my, my son and his wife expecting their first child. And this is a family place and that's the way we want it to be. And we look forward to it being approved so that we can enjoy this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. We'll go ahead and open it up to the public at this time. If there is anybody from the public that would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. If you brought it.
So Anna, I believe you can speak now.
And if you could, please, please state your name for the record and keep your comments to three minutes.
Hi, my name is Anna Hilligus and I live directly across Carmelita on the corner of San Gabriel and Carmelita from Chris and Beth. And I have watched them do such incredibly wonderful things to the property in the last few years. And I'm excited about them putting a shop in. They are fun people that in enjoy what they do. And I think I have any, I think I would see, I will see the shop more than anybody because it's right out my kitchen window and I, I think they've already done nice, beautiful for the property and I'm hoping the shop gets to be passed. So that's it. I just wanted to say, go guys.
Thank you, Anna. Okay, Lee, let's take your comments.
My name is Lee Collins. I live on the property with my wife. Like my dad said, we are also expecting our first baby here very shortly. Obviously, storage can be an issue, especially in areas like this. I know square footage of the shop has come into question. And just putting my two cents in, you know, I've got a, I've got a thirty something foot boat that obviously I would love to park inside. Also building a family vehicle that's been in my family for over forty years. It's a sixty six Cadillac. And anybody that knows cars knows how gigantic that car is. We, we are a car family through and through. And, you know, we, we plan, we would love to get this approved so, so we can enjoy just, just carrying on the family tradition of having beautiful cars and, and living in beautiful places. So, you know, like I said, the square footage came into play. I've got a gigantic boat and a gigantic car that I would love to park inside if, if that would be possible. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Lee.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name's Carla Wingenbach. I live up the street. And I am not in favor of the size. I'm not saying that they shouldn't have any workshop. I'm not saying that it's an ugly design because it's not, it looks nice. But why do we have zoning rules? Because you don't want everybody to just do whatever the heck they want. And it's, their lot is already smaller than is according to the, the zone of today. And it has two dwellings on it, which is fine. But you can't even see the primary dwelling, so this gigantic workshop is going to be next to that small little house, which I like. I like the house. And it goes against the rules of the city in the sense that it says the floor may be increased by approval of the administration, use permit, blah, blah, blah. When it is, it according to the appearance and design criteria and when additional findings can be made to support the increased size. Well, yeah, it's nice looking, but I fail to see any reason that anybody needs that big a space. And whether they're working for a commercial venture or not, the activity that goes on there could still be the same, even if they're only working on their own cars or their own bicycles. And that's fine, because that's their prerogative to use their property, how they want to use it, but I, but I would suggest that it be less than a hundred percent size of the auxiliary dwelling because that's what you see from the street. You can't see the primary dwelling from the street. So I don't see there is any support for the increased size. And of course, they're not going to be able to use it for commercial use. That's a given. And so I just don't understand why it has to be so big. The only reason I can think of is that there'll be large, it, it actually makes it viable for large machinery to be in there. And it's already being issued a exemption to the normal use by being placed where it is near between the street and the house, which is fine. I understand that there is an actual reason for that. But there is no reason why it needs to be that big. Do you want to say something?
I would like to say something too. So I'm Phil Wingenbach, a neighbor up the street. I've met the Collins family. I like them. They're good people. But I'm, so as a result, I'm not pleased that we as previously existing residents have to object to this aberration from previously existing zoning regulations. I want them to have spaces to do their hobbies, but the zoning was in place before they purchased the property. They could have purchased property with zoning that allowed commercial sized buildings. I'm not pleased that I will now have an adversarial relationship with my close neighbors. So this whole procedure is not to my liking. The regulations were there before they bought the property, so I'm not happy about having to be a buzzkill for them, people that I like. But the regulations were in place. The building being placed between the main residence and the road means that it will be a visual disadvantage or a thing of ugly forever, quote unquote. And it's a blatant violation of existing codes that were in place before they purchased the property. So if you allow them to build it, then you will have to allow other property owners to also build accessory workshop structures between the primary residence and the street. I think that they should be able to do their hobbies in a much smaller outbuilding. We are a residential neighborhood and a building of this size belongs in an industrial zone like trafficway, not here. I urge you to adhere to existing zoning regulations and not allow this hideous structure that will reduce our property values and degrade the visual appeal of our neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there anybody else from the public that would like to make any comments? Okay, if not, we will go ahead and close the public hearing portion of the meeting.
Somebody just raised their hand.
Oh, okay.
And then they went down and then somebody else raised their hand, so I don't know.
Okay, we'll go ahead and reopen that. And have Elizabeth Collins address this.
Elizabeth, I believe that you can speak if you unmute.
Hello, I'm Shirley Willis. I am the neighbor across the street from the Collins. And I have no objection.
Tell me you're using your computer.
Go ahead.
Oh, I, I'm the neighbor across the street and in fact, I'm using their computer right now. But I have no objections. They have done nothing but improve the property so far. And the reason for the building is they have vehicles and things they have to do. They need that big of a shop. I wouldn't want my vehicle setting out being destroyed when I could have something on my property to protect them. And so I see no reason why they can't have the size of the building they, they need and has been approved. And like I say, they're, have done anything but improve the property. So thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. We have a couple others?
Troy, I believe that you can speak now. If you unmute.
That's right, so if you want to unmute.
I wasn't raising my hand at that time, sorry.
All right, I, all right, great. Okay, well, before, actually, before we close the public comment portion, does any, any of the commissioners have any questions of the applicant? Jason?
I just, I just have one question. It seems that there's a difference of opinion between, between people in the area not liking the visual appearance of the storage building. But the people directly in line with the building who would be seeing it every day seem to be for it. So it, it's hard to make an assessment on that. I did want to ask the applicant if there was a specific reason that they had to go above the, the site requirement or the size requirement. Was, was there a reason they went to twenty four hundred that gives some reason that we would grant this?
If the applicant is online, if they could, if they want to address that. Troy's? Troy?
Yeah. So the reason we decided to go from two thousand to twenty four hundred square feet is between the use of the building itself and the storage of riding lawnmowers, tractors, so on and so forth. We felt that rather than try to do this later down the road, we should try and get it large enough at this point to suit all the needs. We're trying to get all of our ag equipment, so to speak, and vehicles off the street and out of visible.
Say that to me, Jason?
Okay, and then as far as the, the maximum square footage of the, that the the code allows is what, twenty one thousand, two thousand one hundred ninety one square feet with the required changes?
Yes, that's the maximum allowed through the administrative use permit process. And then the planning commission can allow exceptions to that in larger structures.
Okay, so it's a difference of about two hundred and nine feet. Okay. Specifically, those additional two hundred and nine square feet are just simply if you want more space or is there a building limitation? Is this prefab or something that would require it to to exceed that twenty one ninety one, besides just wanting a bigger building?
Troy, I think you can still speak.
I can still speak. It, it's, it's not a prefab building. It'll be conventionally framed building on a concrete slab. And the basis for rounding off the square footage was basically to adhere to basically making the building a rectangle to get that roof design accurate and that's the basic reason.
Okay, and then so this was architecturally put together by, what company? Has anybody worked on that on the line right now?
Can I still speak?
Yeah.
Yes.
Nelson Bernal, NRB drafting, put together those basic plans. Those are, those are basic rough drafts that we worked with city staff to get enough on paper to go through this process. There'll be further plans and drawings down the road when we submit for a building permit.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, if not, we will go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you very much, Troy. And we'll bring it back to the planning commission for additional discussion or a motion if anybody has one. Before we do that, maybe either Phil or Kelly can explain how the, what the planning commission's jurisdiction is in allowing this type of building above and beyond what is currently allowed in the zoning.
So I'll start and then Kelly can also fill in as well. As you recall, this item went to the administrative use permit hearing. And it was determined that it actually needed to go to the planning commission in order to get essentially what we call kind of like an exception. So the planning commission kind of has free rein. When a project goes to planning commission, we can look at the site, look at all the conditions. And we have a little more discretion on the basic findings. What we do need to make is the basic conditional use permit findings. And let me see if these are the ones. Are these the basic use permit findings on the screen right now, Kelly? These are the ones. Okay. Now, there's some additional findings that you have that are printed in your staff report and also that were in the administrative use permit staff report. And those findings are for when And those findings are for when um, we get one of these projects for an accessory structure. And they've kind of pre mitigated all the issues and it doesn't have to go to planning commission if they meet those. But if they don't meet those findings, then we come to this level of the planning commission. But we still have to meet these basic conditional use permit findings that is condition is consistent with the general plan. Um, that it it um, not detrimental to the health, safety, welfare of the general public. And the key one, that's always a challenge to make, you know, is it is it consistent with the immediate neighborhood? Or will it, you know, generate things that are unsafe like traffic and things like that? So it's a little bit subjective on the fact of consistency with the neighborhood. And that's where I think the planning commission needs to use discretion and and hear the the neighborhood comments and hear the the owner's comments and and look at the situation. There's a lot of different things in that neighborhood and so one could say it's consistent. Another person might say it's inconsistent.
Thank you, Phil, for that explanation.
I hope that helps. I'm I'm trying to be as neutral as possible.
Um, Victoria, I saw your hand jump up, but went down. Are you still?
Yeah, um, thanks, thanks, Jeff. I basically wanted to re confirm, what's the square footage of that second residence that it would be right next to?
I believe they're at twelve hundred square feet, which is our maximum ADU size, and I believe they have an attached garage.
Okay, yeah, because that was one of the public comments that I heard tonight from a neighbor that it would be humongous compared to what it's sitting next to, which is an actual residence. And so I think visually, that's where I'm hearing that there that there's some valid points there as far as the scalability of like you have the house and then you have this giant workshop. Um, but as far as the comments thinking it'd be a blight on the property or that it would depreciate the value, I personally wouldn't be able to make that finding. I think this is gorgeous. The design is is very nice and I think staff did a good job trying to add in the colors and the siding and the windows to make it look more like a barn in character. So that's, I guess, my feedback for right now of what I'm thinking.
Jason.
I would just like to say a few things. First off, we congratulations on the family. Understand the addition. Um, and here's that the neighbors here have been putting that have seen them putting in a lot of effort to make this property more beautiful in the area, the overall feeling that I can get. And, you know, I'm the son of a mechanic. I've got plenty of family that has fair amount of cars outside. I've seen projects like this and it might seem a little overkill when you're doing a project, but when and Jason can probably attest this, when you're dropping a transmission out or when you're using a hoist and a pulley and you're pulling a block out or you're rebuilding stuff, you have to be real particular. You set things up. Um, and so I could see how a lot of, depending on how adept they are. Um, so I just wanted to say I can, I can understand the purpose of it since they're doing a slash storage and they want to have the ability to be able to do elbows deep work. Um, and then I also wanted to say, Mr. Collins, thank you for your service. That is definitely noted. And in a situation like this, um, I kind of had the same thing that Jason noticed. It seemed the two people that are closest to the property aren't having a problem with out seen and it looks like the plan that they submitted is trying to fit within the area. So that's just kind of what I what sticks out in my mind. I just wanted to make sure that voice that.
I find it interesting that the complaints on the project aren't really against having the shop, aren't really against having it in the location where it's being proposed. That's primarily the size of the building. And, uh, well, it is the size of the building. And then there's a discussion that the the that there was existing zoning rules that were in place. We are going through a process right now that has been allowable within our system for quite a while. Yes, there's a standard footprint in which we work within. But there's also an opportunity to increase that through the process that we're going through. That particular area of town is a very old area. Uh, there's a lot of eclectic construction in that area. I I know just up the street on San Gabriel, there's a a large kind of Quonset hub style building that's used to garage a an RV. Now, to me, that's something that I would never do to a property, but that's part of the the eclecticism of that area. There is a lot of different styles within within that area. There isn't a consistency. Let's say if this was a a tract of homes and everything was kind of a Mediterranean style and then someone's wanting to put this barn inside the middle, middle of that area, then there would be a conflict with the characteristics of that area. I personally don't see that with this project. I think that the applicants have tried to accommodate concerns of people. They've accommodated the concerns that staff has expressed. I think they have done a wonderful job. I think the location is uh, the best that there is on the property. They can maybe move it somewhere else, uh, but not not be not be friendly to the site by doing so. And then I think the discussion that both Jason and uh, and had about automobiles and vehicles and boats and stuff. I mean, I don't know where they're parked now. I saw on the on on the aerial photograph, it looked like there were some built of vehicles parked around the primary structure. But I think having them located away from views is beneficial also. And I I support the uh, the idea of doing that within the project's definition.
Just have one final comment. Uh, the the main concern I have is not the building. I think that everybody would be be happy that the building was built because they did do a good job on location and it's far enough away from the street. I don't, I don't see sightlines where it would be difficult for anybody to be really offended by it, except for maybe the neighbors directly across the street, but they seem to be on board. And it is a beautiful structure. It's built well. The only thing is if we make a an exception for the the that two hundred nine extra feet. What is that, that that limitation based on is based on the high, the size of the primary residence? And it's there for a reason. And, uh, you know, I don't know how it's going to be down the future, but if we just kind of you know, approve one and not another, you know, I think people are going to start feeling like it's arbitrary. Um, if there was a specific reason, I love square square footage. My shop, if I could add thousands of square feet on it, I would, but um, there is there are limitations, so. I'm inclined to approve everything. I just, I just, um, if if somebody could give me a reason why it would be prudent to ex- extend that square footage for for no other reason than I just want more square footage. Because if that's the reason, then why wouldn't we approve it for everybody? Does anybody understand what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, and and I can understand your concern. Uh, Phil, if I remember correctly, or Kelly maybe, that if this had been the size of the within size limitation, it could have been approved by the the administrative use permit, is that?
They they actually did have another finding that couldn't be met for the administrative use permit, which um, is that, um, in our new standards that we adopted um, to allow the larger structures, um, we did want those located behind one of the residences on site, you know, so that it wasn't between the street and the residence. Um, and so this one, you know, is pushed forward both on the San Gabriel Road and Carmelita Avenue frontage, so they would still be requesting an exception.
There's just no other option on his property, as you can see by the trees and the rocks and the topography. So, but yeah, that's that's where, that's why we're at the planning commission for it, but.
Well, and the and the planet planet commission has through the CEP process could even grant an even larger building, right?
Yes, and we have on multiple occasions where we make the basic findings.
And and we have, so um, really, it's up to the applicant what they want and whether or not the planning commissioner wants to approve it. And if somebody else wanted us to go through the heartache of going through the CEP process, they could come before the planning commission and see if the planning commission would approve that as well. So that that's kind of where we are on this this particular item. Uh, the planning commission commission has the the ability to approve even a much larger building if we wanted to. They requested a twenty four hundred square feet.
Yeah, and and just a little bit, um, you know, conditional use permiters kind of set up for two reasons, you know, one are you know, uses that, you know, might be compatible with the neighborhood and sometimes there needs to be additional conditions. Um, we can't do that through a building permit process necessarily. Um, and so, you know, this one is kind of you within that realm is, you know, it might be okay. It it might need some extra conditions. It might, you know, might need to be a little bit smaller, whatever you come up with. Um, in general, and and accessory garage is, you know, completely fine in a residential zone in terms of use. And so this one just does hinge on, you know, what what do we need to do to make it compatible with the neighborhood?
The one good thing about this one is it does have a substantial setback, forty feet and sixty eight feet. Um, is pretty, is pretty darn good. So the fact that they have the room to do that on this site and the site is flat is definitely to the advantage.
And, you know, honestly, even looking at the the length of the building, it doesn't look like it's much longer than the the secondary residence, right? It looks about the same length as that and width, just doesn't just fills in the the empty space of the whole.
Yeah, the footprint of the residence, it's twelve hundred plus probably a five hundred square foot garage and then the attached portion of the garage, so it's probably.
I believe that they have a, it's a twelve hundred square foot residence with a five hundred square foot garage and then they do have quite some substantial porches. And so under roof, it is about twenty four hundred square feet. Uh, but of course, the building's articulated a little bit differently, um, in terms of the residential unit.
I'm with kind of where Jason's at and I I think there's no doubt that I would like to approve some workshop tonight. Um, it's just a matter of the the size and the implication of what that means for other, you know, whether it's arbitrary of like, oh, one commission says yes to no, but I guess that's why we have the commission. And it's rotating and there's citizens that occupy these spaces and it's not going to be the same commission every time. Um, but also too, I'm aware and I remember the outgoing commissioners saying this as some advice to the new coming commissioners such as myself. Anytime we make a revision or or imply that something else should change, it's not just an opinion of ours, but that's a potential huge dollar amount for the applicant. So if we're saying, oh, just shave off three hundred feet. Okay, I can say that, but then what does that mean for them and all the other designs and specs that they have to do before they even get the permit? So I guess I'm I do appreciate all the work they've done to be compliant with what staff's requests are to even get it to this far, so.
Victoria, you nailed it there. That's kind of where I'm at. Uh, I I I wished, I wish it had come in under the twenty one ninety one, so we wouldn't have to consider it because everything seems to be fine. I just, uh, I I really don't think shaving off two hundred square feet is going to make a big difference. It's going to be pretty much the same. You know, visual impact, it's going to be the same. Otherwise, you're just going to have a little less elbow room inside and then they've got to go back to the drawing board and redraw the whole thing.
Right, the roof pitch.
Not inclined to do that, so, um, I would, I would be um, willing to go ahead and make the motion to approve. Uh, if anybody else would like to second that.
I'll second it.
And, um, so do you want, is your recommendation to approve with all the conditions that the
the recommendation here?
It's on the screen too.
Oh, there we go. Planning Commission adopt draft resolution approving use permit uh, for minor CP. Uh, USC twenty one dash zero one one three, allowing the construction of an oversized accessory structure that will serve as a workshop on the applicant's property as condition.
And Randy, did you still want to second?
I'll second. That's why I was raising my hand. You beat me, Jason.
All right, we ready for a roll call?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Anderson? Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza?
Yes, approved.
Commissioner Keith?
Yes, approved.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Sureperson banned an ICA?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Collins family, and we wish you the best of luck with your your project.
Good luck on the babies.
I'll just add one note that the the action is appealable within fourteen days, so. Just in case anyone's not happy with the decision, so I've got to throw that out there. And use that process, so.
There's a cost to the appeal though, is there not?
There is a cost to the appeal. It's not cheap. What's that latest cost, Kelly? Do you remember? Off the top of your head, it's over.
That was a thousand.
Yeah.
I I think it's around that for city council appeal, yeah.
If you have further questions about that. And we can talk further, but again, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, then we'll go ahead and move on to our director's report.
All right, well, pretty soon, we're going to be giving you some dates when you can get involved with our general plan update. We're actually meeting with a consultant this Friday and we're going to outline some things. The contract's finally been awarded for that huge project. We've all been talking about it and you've all been wondering what the heck's going to go on? How can I get involved? How can I, how can I do something? That time is coming, so don't worry. We'll have plenty for you to do and we need you to get involved. We need the whole community to get involved. And, uh, we're going to need a lot of help, so. I'll be talking about that at our next hearing. I'll give you some dates and we'll be, we're talking about some things and we'll be starting a public outreach process. Right now, we're still in this data collection process, information gathering. The consultants are gathering all the data from our community so that they can be knowledgeable about, um, where to go next and knowledgeable when we get into our, um, our outreach process. So that's the big thing that's happening. Um, in addition to all of our big development projects that we're still working on, three of those at Del Rio, one that actually came in the front door today that Kelly's going to be working on for, uh, marketplace up there that's going to include the Valley Fresh Market. That'll be coming to the planning commission soon. That's going to include the the retail store there for the Valley Fresh Market. It's also going to include some office. It's also going to include some kind of light industrial, maybe some residential um, and some additional retail pads. Really exciting project on the north east corner, Del Rio Alcomun Real. Um, we're still working on the Barrel Creek project on the other side of the freeway as well. That's coming forward. And, um, the property on the southeast corner of El Comun Real, Del Rio is going to go through some changes. They're still trying to figure out. Make everything else. So that's going to probably come back to us again for another look. Uh, as will the Dub Creek site. That's going to do some changes again too, so we'll be uh, doing plenty of things on those larger, larger projects, so. But other than that, um, we're just, we're also working on getting our SB nine and accessory dwelling unit stuff together, our policymaking. You'll be seeing that hopefully in May, we'll get there. We have our legal team looking at that now and that'll be fun for us to deliberate on and that'll cover all of our local standards for our junior ADUs, our regular ADUs, and then our SB nines, which are a lot split um, standards for the SB nines and the SB nine units, so. A lot to consider there. We're going to be coming forward with some objective design standards and all the stuff that the state wants us to do along those parameters. So that's going to be interesting. But that's it in a nutshell, unless you've got questions for me.
Yeah, uh, when you're talking about SB nine and ADUs and so on. Are we going to, um, take on an AB sixteen hundred study at some point to define uh, what the development impact fees are going to be for projects that fall within those areas within a, within an SB nine project or an ADU project versus how we are dealing with it today?
Well, SB nine projects are going to get the regular development impact fees like any other house would. That's the good thing on that. Now, ADUs are a little different because they have to have reduced impact fees. they have to have reduced impact fees. Anything that's below 750 square feet gets to be exempt. Anything that's over that has to be kind of a sliding scale that is, you know, in relation to the average house size in a Tascadero. So we already have a fee schedule adopted for ADUs now in place that we'll continue to use even with our new ordinance. And the, and the SB9 stuff though is just going to default to regular, regular fee schedule, which you know, is one of the things that we're looking at now is just an examination of all of our application fees. You'll be seeing some information about that soon. And as you can imagine, with the way inflation is going, the way things are going, everything is just going up and up and up and up. But there is no immediate plan to do an AB 1600 study, but we are looking at an overall reinvention of the wheel of our development impact fee structure based on our long-term infrastructure improvements that are needed in the city. But we've been working on that for a while and we just don't know when that's going to come forward. It's just a lot of work. So.
Thank you.
Yeah. So.
Any other questions for staff? Victoria?
Hi, Phil.
Hi.
Hey, I, I've been so eager to figure out when the messaging is going to take place for, you know, outreach with the general plan. I think mostly I've been talking to a lot of young families. And people who are moving into the area and saying like, wow, things are changing before my eyes. And I've only moved here for a year and things downtown are just popping, you know? So I feel like, you know, yeah, whatever we can get for the next meeting, that's even the smallest of messaging, that just makes sure that we're all speaking the same thing, even if it's a few bullet points. I'd really appreciate that. So, so we can be a team here.
Absolutely. We need to get more stuff out there right now on our, on our new website that we're creating for this and we'll have that shortly. But remind me too, what's happening in the downtown? The downtown is going to be changing a lot in the next two years, even outside of the general plan because of the stuff that's already approved and planned and the fact that we're spending to add street trees, angled parking, 130 parking spaces, lighting, improved crosswalk. And the Carlton's for sale and we'll get some new owners and we're even, you know, we're looking at now Flums Muffler and, and used cars is for sale and we're trying to attract buyers to that site. So there's all of a sudden is amazing energy in the downtown, even aside of the general plan happening, which is going to really look at the bigger picture of the city. Yeah, you're going to see a lot of changes coming forward. It's, it's interesting what's happening. It was a definite upward movement.
I had also kind of a question and also just a, a comment to make about, you know, the mandated Cal, Climate Action Plan, California mandates it whether we want it or not. And I guess what I see it as from talking to staff a little bit about it, it's just that it's an implementation strategy for the general plan. I guess that's the way I see it. There's elements that cross over very much so. So things that are in our general plan are going to inherently be copied and pasted into our climate action plan. And then from there, it's like, well, how are we going to meet that? And so to me, I guess I'm just curious, you know, is there any ramification if we do not have that in on time? Because it seems like we're not going to get it in on time. And then can there be conversations about implement, implementation strategies sooner rather than later? Because that to me is how we're going to really lift it off the paper as pretty as it'll be on the website. So.
That is all going to be up to our city council and how they prioritize that. One of the newsletters that the city manager just put out is about our action plan. And we just did an update on our action plan. And our action plan is what the council gives us and you at our workload for the two years. And we're about a year through that now. And we just reported out on how we're progressing with our action plan. So the climate action plan needs to be part of that. So that it's on our agenda for things to do.
Where is that?
It's not. So I can get you copies of the action plan. There's a staff report. Actually, I can get you on that. It goes through the entire thing. We just did a presentation in our last council hearing on Tuesday on that. And I, I'll, I'll get you also the city manager's newsletter that talks about it in general terms, which is a really cool way to see it. But that's where that needs to happen. The general plan is going to give birth. And that's one way to say give birth to a huge payload of implementation items that we'll need to do. We'll need to do a new zoning regulations, a new subdivision regulations, a new climate action plan. We'll need to do new street standards. It's going to make us redo just about everything.
Yeah, we're all do less, huh?
Yeah. So exactly. Yeah. So we're going to have a lot on our plate. And so it depends where that particular item ranks from our council and what priority they want to give to it. I guess got to be honest, that's where it's at. For me, it's high priority, but is that high priority for my, for my five bosses and my city manager? I got to, we got to get them to be on board.
And we have an election coming up too. And so some of us might be here, some of us might not be here after the election too. And so there'll be new commissioners. They have to bone up on things and get, get on, get on board quickly.
Yep. So.
So.
Kelly, are you frozen or are you just sitting still?
Well, thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. We had a good meeting, good discussions and looking forward to our next meeting, which is scheduled for May 3rd.
Yes. Yeah, I forget what we have on our agenda for the third.
It's Wednesday, sorry.
What's that, a net? Oh.
Wednesday, main society.
Yes, that's over on Ramona Road. They're doing an expansion to accommodate dogs. So what was I going to say? Less I don't know. Anyway, I was going to make a joke, but yeah, that's going to be a fun one. I'll play some more wagging and less barking, but it's going to be interesting.
Well, we're looking forward to that.
We see that already?
You saw it at the DRC.
DRC.
Yeah.
DRC.
You saw the DRC.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, look forward to seeing it and look forward to seeing y'all again then. We'll, and we'll go ahead and adjourn our meeting until May 3rd. Thank you, everyone.
Bye bye, everyone.
Bye.
See you guys, everybody. Have a great night.